Call them in to order.
Copy.
Here.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley?
Yes.
Testory?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we leave any public comments in here? Do we need to save any? We'll move on to section one, the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Call it.
Copy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley?
Yes.
Testory?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Section two is the unfinished business ordinance of resolutions purposes tabled.
We need to have an open and close of public hearing. Do you want to call a public hearing?
Do we have that inherent somewhere?
No, it's just at the top. You could just say we would now open the public hearing for appropriations.
We have now opened a public hearing for appropriations.
And comments?
Any comments? It's not closed.
Actually, you need to vote.
The votes are closed.
Motion seconded.
I would go close it.
Second it.
Call it.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley?
Yes.
Testory?
Yes.
Copy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Section three is our new business.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 1005 appropriations ordinance fiscal year 2019.
Second it. Discussion.
Kind of self-explanatory, this just is the legal authority to spend what we've approved in the budget. It's, you know, obviously the numbers are a little higher in case, because this is the legal authority, they're a little higher in case we go over budget. Obviously, we'd have to use fund balance or something, but that way, we have already faced that. This is per fiscal year, well, it's the last one now, it's after April 30th. So it just grants us the ability to spend what we already set for the budget. That's basically what this ordinance is.
Any further discussion? Call it.
McKinley?
Yes.
Testory?
Yes.
Copy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Make a motion, ordinance 1006, approving the sale of 217 South Main to Donna Matera per the lease agreement.
Second it. Discussion?
Nothing new from what we discussed at the moment.
So this is this, we're selling this based on the contract that was done by the council at the time this was drawn up.
Yes.
That's correct.
And we've had to figure out how to make it work.
True, yes.
Because it was not, it was not kosher when it was drawn up.
Yeah, it didn't follow one of the set procedures under the statute. That is correct.
But now we've figured out how to make it work legally.
Yes.
All right. And she's okay with this, correct?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Call it.
Testory?
Yes.
Copy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Make a motion for resolution 2018-8 MFT for fiscal year 2019 motorfield tax.
Second it. Discussion?
Okay, you need to make a decision tonight. I've given you the budget sheet so you can see where MFT is at for discussion. So I have two resolutions here, so it just depends from, that I've been prepared to go to IDOT, it just depends on which one you want to approve. One is for the maintenance renovation of Green Street, and the other is for renovation, maintenance renovation of Water Street. Those are each in the 100, no, Green would be the 200 block, Water would be the 100 block off of Main. I would recommend Water Street because Calvin said that the pipes underneath are just a disaster. And that we would be kind of, we have money in the, in the budget under the annual water main replacement fund or line item, so we could, you know, line the sewer. He thinks it's in good shape, but we'll make sure if needed, line the sewer, replace the water main, and then do the, the curb and gutter, the sidewalk and the road. Green Street also has issues, as I'm sure you're aware. The biggest is if there's a catch basin that's falling in, you've probably seen the cones, but our crews can fix that if we choose to go with Water Street. So at least, you know, we'll get that eliminated as an issue. I'm just putting it off until we decide what we're going to do.
You're saying the 100 West Block of Weston?
100, yeah, I guess it would be West One.
So that's the main all the way up to the, to the field?
No, 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 one block.
Oh, for one block?
So if attached to this, you'll see, these are preliminary numbers, a file to this here if you have questions. They've prepared written numbers that added, and then some of the other things like salt and CO6 and treatment. The two estimates for Water and Green are in a packet, that's what these are. Water Street is more expensive. I think, I'm going to guess without having looked at it, it's probably because it's got a curb and gutter.
Right, the condition of the existing curb and sidewalk both needs a lot of replacement there. Green Street still has some good curb pieces and some good sidewalk that we'd salvage. Water Street's got a lot of deterioration. And then the sidewalk up against the building from Service Way to Main Street is not ADA, so it's too steep. So you'd have to flatten it out along the building for the doorways going into the building, that kind of thing. And Green Street the same way, if you overlay the street, you need ADA sidewalk or handicap accessible. And at Lincoln and Green, there's steps right now that-
There's a carriage walk that probably had to be removed. Those are the steps from the street to the sidewalk, that's what they call it.
We have to eliminate those steps.
Yeah, we have to eliminate those steps. Also-
Adam's got a location map if you, if you want to see.
Also, just keep in mind, I want to put this into the mix, is IDOT says we have more money than we do. I trust our numbers more because they base it on their projections of what we're going to get. They're not always accurate. So the numbers are higher for Water Street. And if we do Water Street, we probably have to eliminate any seal coating or spray patching, any other areas of town. Because Water Street calls for almost 220,000, which we only have 170 total in the fund. If we spend 150 this year, it would be 20 grand in the fund. So is it the 291, is that the total for Water Street, or is it the 322? Because there's engineering inspection, then the total estimated maintenance. So is that total estimated maintenance cost, is that the cost for, is that the total cost for Water Street down here? Or is that the total cost for both projects? No, that's everything. That's everything. Yeah, that would include the other, like the spray patching and seal coating and CO6. So halfway down, so Water would be 140,000, and Green would be 120,000. Oh, okay.
We're gonna, we have Water Street all the way down scheduled for sewer water.
Well, it starts a little bit east of Washington. Because you already did gutters and stuff at one part of Water, like in between John Street and like Washington Street right there. That was all replaced. Right. Not that long ago. This, this is closer to Main, and then the water project we're doing is over by Washington. So we're talking at like William Street to Main Street for Water Street? Okay.
When you say the sidewalk on Water Street from Service Way up to Main Street, it's got too much incline? Is that right?
Cross slope. From the building out to the curb, that kind of slope.
The curb is just too much slope?
Yeah, 2% is a maximum for a wheelchair, and it's, it's anywhere from 3 to 5, you know, it kind of wanders.
My other question is, is it still going to be as wide?
Pardon?
It would still be as wide?
It would still be the same width. It's eight foot wide out to the face of curb from the building to the- Face of curb is eight foot. We wouldn't change that. We'd just remove the curb and sidewalk and put back new.
The reason I ask that is because that has been an issue over the years, growing up in this town and being familiar with that corner quite well and everything. Because we've been lucky, there's never been a real major wreck there.
Because low speed, that probably helps.
It helps if you go slow speed, but some people don't. They turn the corner and they're just quick ride on by. Now, we don't have as much traffic on Main Street or as much traffic parking down on that street as we used to have at one time. So it's, it's a difference, but it hasn't been a concern. That's why I asked. I always thought if we ever did replace that, we'd narrow the sidewalk, but if it has to go through ADA compliance, then-
Well, you need, yeah, you need at least five foot wide. No, it's eight foot right now, eight foot on both sides.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. You're looking for some kind of safer turning radius there, widen the street.
We don't, we use some sort of safer turn, and it's, like I said, the, the traffic on Main Street is not what it used to be 30 years ago.
If you narrow the sidewalks, how much does the street gain? Sounds like about six feet.
Yeah, you would, you would, you would gain three foot walk on each side, right? Or three foot of street on each side.
Five foot sidewalk pretty standard in cities?
Yeah, five foot is pretty much standard. For a wheelchair to get in a doorway, he needs, he needs a five by five square to turn that chair.
And then the other thing too, there at that Main Street where there comes, there's that hump there, we're going to eliminate that, I would assume. Once one street comes up and kind of humps a little bit and everything, and it gets-
In the street, a bump in the street kind of? Yeah. Yeah, we would, we would mill that so it connect in there and make that smooth. And another thing we noticed on the overlay from Main to Service Way, it looks like very thin asphalt over a brick pavement.
It is.
So we wouldn't mill two inches there because we'd be afraid to mill it into the brick. So I just want to cut a butt joint at Main Street or just a bite in there and then just overlay the existing. When they get from Service Way to Williams, we'd be a two inch mill and put back two inches, so we'd-
You've got brick from, from, from Main Street down to Plum Street, no, to John Street now. So there's brick underneath there all that way.
There's a manhole right in the middle of Water Street that, you can even see the brick showing, you know what I mean? And I don't think there's, it's probably a half inch of asphalt. I, I don't want to mill the brick. I want, you got a good base there, I don't want to tear that up.
How much does adding six foot of street to the project change the price?
Well, you have more hot mix, and that's the, that's the big ticket item. I'd have to crunch the numbers on that, but you're going to have to, still have to remove the curb and the walk. So I'd say maybe 5 to 10,000 more, you know, just off the top of my head.
It sounds really a harsh priority because of the water lines and to the water service lines.
Yes, Calvin was, I asked the staff from their perspective which one they would prefer, and Calvin jumped right in because he said that Water Main there is horrible.
Yeah, there's literally no curbs on that street either. I mean, they just are gone.
Is there any underground at Green Street too?
No, no.
No? See, and this is just my opinion, if I was replacing the water main or underground on Water, I'd want that backfill to sit a winter and let it do its settling before I did any paving on it. But that's, you know, you might want to think of it that way. Green Street, if you can go over there now and get it done, and you can, if you can still have the budget to do the underground on Water and backfill all that and let it sit and let the trench settle, you're better off constructing on a trench that's, you know, sat over the winter. It's just something to think about.
So you're, so you're saying that there's, there's work we could do on Green Street? The one on Green Street?
All right.
Before this is done, if we, if we let this set out?
If you did your underground on Water and, yeah, and then when-
Essentially, you underground on Water, just up there, and then do Water maybe next year, the street.
Whenever you get the funds.
Yeah, it might be two years.
Right, you're right.
It's a long time to leave that open.
Yeah.
Well, it has to be probably two years, because-
There's a lot of traffic.
I was going to say, there's a lot of trucks that come back there, like that turn right left into that Service Way. I mean, our trucks deliver back there, we've got other trucks.
We could buy a little money and do like flowable fill, I don't know.
Correct, flowable fill is an instant, yeah.
It's just more, it's more expensive.
It's all voids. But you know the traffic better than I do. I mean, you know, you live here, so you know, you know what needs it.
Well, I don't think, that's a busy street, even now, even, it is, it doesn't need to be shut down for a real long time.
Green Street would be easier to-
Well, Green Street's going to take more time. We'd have to work with the residents on those carriage walks because there's more than one. I think there's one on each side, as I recall. And I know the one is only a few years old.
In the 200 block?
Yeah.
Sounds like we'd get, we'd get a better product in the end though, if we did, if we did the underground of Water, let it set, and then worked on Green Street from the meantime.
If we let it set, but I'm saying you can use flowable fill and it doesn't need to set.
Do we need to re-crunch the numbers before we can approve it then?
Well, the flowable fill would be in the water department, so no. Because that's part, part of the main.
Add six foot of street, as you said, it was going to raise it five or 6,000.
I don't think we need to do that. I really don't. I mean, I'm throwing something out to you that went back a long time ago, but I'm more familiar with than you are.
Man, that's on, that's on your corner.
That's on my corner, that's right. And I, it's not the corner that it used to be. And if anything, maybe the parking needs to be changed to where it can, there's a better chance that everybody can enter. There has to be a parking, there's always a parking issue there. There's always an issue with cars being there because the trucks have come back there and everything. So-
Maybe you can widen the street out four feet instead of six, again, something.
I don't know.
It's only a half block. Then your street is wider from Service Way back to Williams, your street has got the width again.
Yeah, it widens out, but then, yeah.
You know, we're still going to try to adjust parking sometime. I don't know if it's summer, but we have some ideas.
Yeah. I think, I think that's more of an issue than anything, is the parking where the cars are going to be at, and then they widen it out. It needs to be fixed, it needs to be fixed.
Well, and I'm also concerned, just to throw another thing to consider, is that if we don't fix that water line, whether we do or not, but if we don't, and we fix the water lines, we're like, you know, Water, Washington, and Indiana.
You've done that.
You're gonna, yeah, I mean, then you've approved it there, and it's going to fall apart here. I know Michael's Water doesn't run that way, but still.
No, I need back there, you start there, fix it.
I agree.
I think Water Street's where we need to go right now. Seems to be the most traffic, you know, most used area between the two. The question is, have we lived without the other almost 50,000 seal coating and spray patching?
We didn't do any last year.
There's always something to seem to do that every year, you know, I don't know why, but, and that's why down in front of Scott's house, it just built up. Every year we put the air seal put, and it's ridiculous to come in and do that. We don't have that, we, Scott-
It's just layers and layers of stuff that's just-
They got to build up on Allen Street too, they got, they got to put ass, they got to put patching over the manhole so you don't have a three foot, or three inch dip in the manhole.
That's what it's always been around here. He does always keep it and did it every year. No, I don't think we're going to hurt anything by not doing it. There's no streets or any bad trouble.
Well, if we have to go something, if we can, we'll figure it out. Right, in a serious situation. So the resolution is ready to be voted on if you just choose, you know, I would say just, if you want to amend it or just go ahead and approve it, it doesn't state which one, you'll just have the mayor sign the Water Street one. Do we need to specify?
I, I think you should specify, at least in the motion, which direction you want. If there's a specific motion, if someone says, "I want Water Street," or whatever, I would recur to that.
I was going to say, just like to say to include Water Street, or, because there's other things in this resolution.
Correct, yeah, and so that, that may makes it clear of what the direction of the council is to-
Can she change her wording then, now, if her's been seconded, everything?
Just make a motion to amend the resolution 2018-8?
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, it was sort of a generic motion, if I recall. So yes, I would ask that if you have a specific direction, yeah, make a motion to amend to-
I move to amend resolution 2018-8 MFT fiscal year 2019 to include Water Street for the, for our main purposes. Take care of Water Street.
Do we need to specify what, what we're doing to Water Street, like flow of fill or the-
Flow of fill is for water main, so, no, I don't-
That won't be amended.
No. It's part of the main.
Whoa, 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 there's amendment on the floor, we need to get this figured out first.
Yeah, 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 so, does that provide you with enough direction about what you're, what to do then?
Yes.
Okay, so what you said is to include Water Street, is what I heard?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's how it's listed.
Okay, so I think there needs to be a second amendment.
Second it.
Okay, now, a vote on that amendment.
It's mill and HMA on Water Street from William to Main, so, was that your question?
HMA is what?
Mill and over, what's it called? What's HMA?
Hot Mix.
Yeah, Hot Mix. Hot Mix.
All right. Now, does this mean you want to delete the 50,000, the chip seal and the spray patch?
Yeah, these two things, yeah.
So that's the amendment, the amendment.
Correct.
I'm just concerned with the quality of work on Water Street, that we get the highest quality we can. And if that means setting over the winter, I'm good with that. But if you're saying the flow of fill will fix that, then we're fine with that too.
Yes, I agree with that. The flow of fill, it flows in there like water, it flows all the way.
I don't, I don't want to waive the $50,000 for, and not get, and not get the best job we can on Water Street.
Correct, yeah, I don't, I don't want to.
Well, the 50,000 is not related to Water Street, the 50,000 is the seal coat and spray patch and other areas.
That we couldn't afford to do if we did Water Street, you said?
Correct.
So that's what I'm saying.
Oh, so you're trying to get, yeah.
If we're going to spend that money somewhere else, I want to get the best quality of work we can get. Okay, I think I've already seconded your motion.
We just need to vote on the amendment.
Call it.
McKinley?
Yes.
Testory?
Yes.
Copy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now we need to vote on the main motion, which is, and that main motion includes Water Street.
Say that.
And include Water Street.
Eliminate the spray patch and the chip seal.
No, wait, no, that was the amendment.
Quick little-
All right. That was the amendment, so now-
So we still have to approve the resolution?
Right, 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 okay. Yeah, and that, that gives you the direction you're going to, is that right? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Do I need a motion, a second to approve the resolution?
I'll give you the again, yeah.
No, actually, you just need to call it. You just need to call it.
I was going to say, because I already-
That's right, you already did it, and then we amended it, and it's ready again. That's all right, that's all right. Who's on first?
Tricky.
Call it.
Go with Copy.
Yeah.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley? Testory?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2018-9 intergovernmental agreement for the school resource officer.
Second it. Discussion?
The school board approved this. The nice thing was they were very amiable to the perpetual agreement, so it will continue every year. Now we don't have to keep approving it until one of the parties wants out. So we were fine with the 2% COLA that was approved in our budget. So that was it, I mean, the COLA and the perpetual agreement, so.
We were fine with it up to present board, so.
Unless you have any questions for the chief.
Any other discussion?
Who's the school resource officer now?
Laura Davis, who has been for-
The only one we ever had.
Yeah, she's been here for a number of years.
She's a part-time officer, I didn't know if that was her or not.
No.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call it.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley?
Yes.
Testory?
Yes.
Copy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to approve bidding for aerators for the wastewater treatment.
Second it. Discussion?
These are aerators that move things around, and as you can see, I included the quote so that you could see that once he went out and found out that it was going too high, we need to bid it out. So I'm just asking for approval to draw up for bid. This is in the budget.
This is for the legal, it's correct?
Yes.
Is three in there? Is it three out there or was three out there?
Yes.
That's all we need, is just three out there?
Yes, and as a matter of fact, he found out that half of that tank, the electric panel blew out. And so Mark went over there and found out and fixed it, and so now it will be even more functional.
And the one little house next to the pond and everything, you see the electric panel?
On the tank, like running the tank, that there's, I guess, two different areas that are running it, and one half that was not, not electrical and not running.
Works in the wash, except around there.
So half the phase was down, half, half the electricity?
Well, they weren't using it anyway, but now, that's, this is another one of those things, trying to get the wastewater treatment plant to run the way it's supposed to run, so.
So, so we're approving this to go out to bid as well, we're bidding?
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call it.
McKinley?
Yes.
Testory?
Yes.
Copy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Just a motion, discussion regarding, like, if we make a motion, right?
You don't, you don't need to do that.
Discussion regarding the sole source provider bid waiver for telemetry.
If you're agreeable to this, I would schedule it for the 21st, but we're requesting, actually waiving the bid process on this because we feel it's a sole, almost a sole source provider, BHMG, performed some of the telemetry and work previously. This would allow for a seamless telemetry installation on the other two wells, and then everything would be made, you know, put together the same way, made in the same product. They have the history and the knowledge, it would be more seamless in terms of doing the work. We don't feel that there's going to be any real savings to bidding it out. It's already, he did talk to BHMG, and they said it would be about 91,000, and we budgeted 100. So, you know, Calvin and I talked and just felt that it would make sense, in this case, to just go with the sole source.
How long does bidding now take?
It depends, anywhere from usually two to four weeks. It's not the time that I'm trying to save, it's the fact that they installed the original. This would then all work together, they have the knowledge, you know, there's a lot of working and moving parts, and there would be, you know, it's like having oranges and apples, this would be apples to apples.
Any other discussion?
There's no vote, but I just wanted it for discussion. I, I think if you're amiable, I'd bring it back on the 21st.
I'd rather she admit it.
Why?
Because it's, because it's the right thing to do.
Joe, I mean, do you not agree that it's kind of a good thing to stay with the same company to put anything else in place?
No, because this is where, this is where we were at last year with the engineering group. We've been using one engineering group forever and paying them.
But that's kind of totally different, don't you agree a little bit? I mean-
If this company's got the best price and the best deal, then they should win the bid easily.
Even though they've got like history of what they did past and all that?
They don't have to be the little bidder to win.
Correct, that's right.
So, I mean, if they're even reasonably close to, to, to two other bidders, then you can say it went out to bid, we did the right thing.
I mean, I kind of take what Calvin, you know, I feel like Calvin knows his department and knows what he needs to do, and I mean, if he feels that this is the best route to go, and, you know, if this is how he would handle it, then, I want to trust that the people that are in charge of the departments know what they need.
The only other concern I would have is, is we did the bid specs, what was it with Water we just did with bid specs, and I had to have more stuff to do it, and it costs, you know, I think it was $1,800 to do the bid specs because it's so complicated. So I would have to do that again on this project, so it probably be, I'm going to guess, you know, not all I guess, I hate throwing out numbers and guessing, but it's going to be costly.
Well, if they're familiar with it, they'll-
Now, that's talking about the publication and the newspaper, I'm paying an engineer to prepare the bid specs.
I'm okay with bidding at the center.
That's okay. I, I think we've had this conversation before, and I am generally all for bidding. But in this case, it seems pretty seamless to make everything work together. in this case, it seems pretty seamless to make everything work together. I mean, I'm the one who advocated going out for a new engineer, so. And I'm trying to split the walk. I'm using firearms with, I'm using Mar Stutz, I'm using Fer Graham.
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with this, too. Just.
Well, I can bring it back on the 21st, and you can vote, and see what happens.
Let's do that.
Do that.
Discussion regarding an amendment to the utility shut-off ordinance.
Again, this I can bring back, but for right now, it's just for discussion. Um, we received quite a few complaints about the garbage and comments that, well, I'm gonna pay my utility bill except for the garbage. So we were discussing internally about, our policy is that you have to max out $60 before we would look at shut-off, and that's historically, historically, then water, then electric. Well, now with garbage, let's just say somebody said, I'm not gonna pay my bill for three months. That would be, well, it'd be about three months, would be $45, so four months. Can we shut off? So Joe and I talked, and we looked at the ordinance, and we feel that we could, but we felt it would be better to amend it to include any utility.
Not just the current.
Not just, yeah.
Correct. It, it's, it's written, and different sections are written, uh, in a way that very easily we could interpret as all utilities, but sometimes we could get counsel input.
Better be clear, yeah. Yeah, yeah, and again, um, you may not want to do that. So that's why I just put it for discussion for tonight.
When we had this discussion previously, before this was enacted, we, I believe if I recall, we said we, we would not shut off people's utilities if they couldn't afford their garbage or got behind on the garbage. Now, we have our ordinances for garbage removal, so if they don't pay their bill, wouldn't you not pick their garbage up and then send them an ordinance fine for not having garbage in service?
No, the way area works is they pick up and they send us a bill every month. Well, I think it's gonna be bimonthly, but, um, and so we pay for the service and pay for money, so then we'd be eating it if they didn't pay. Basically, all the other residents will be subsidizing those people.
And you're gonna have court costs and attorney fees and everything else to go after them for $60.
Well, the utilities, whether it's garbage on there or not, has always been an issue to get paid around here, right Sandy?
Yes.
You can't believe the stack of, at the end of the month, everybody goes through, give everybody a chance to pay the utility bill. And, uh, I guess I'm one who's in business and thinks if you don't pay the damn bill, you need to get, we'll get you in some way, you know, we'll make you pay the bill, so. I'm for, if they don't, you know, we need to collect our bill and collect our money. We're in business here.
Well, it, we would treat it similar, if it was the whole bill in its entirety, we would treat it just like we do now. We have the budget billing, we have, we'll work with you and allow you to make payments, we'll send you, you know, suggest you go to LIKE, maybe talk to some, you know, churches or other organizations. We work with people all the time. This just allows us especially if they refuse to pay that portion of the bill, or they're just, you know, in the other time, they're not paying the bill as a whole. Right. It's just we've added a new utility. I can bring it back on the 21st.
You can do that.
And discuss.
Yeah, I don't see, we, we impose ourselves on them. There's gotta be a different way to work this out.
We impose ourselves on everybody with the water, just say we're gonna make history. You're gonna get right down to the, we don't have to be a bad business, Scott. We can sell one of those off, get out of business. We don't have to be a utility business at all.
You can do that.
You can do that.
Part of it is we already, we are in a contract now, and we have certain legal obligations now with area disposal, too. So, you know, I can't call them and say, well, this, this person can't afford it this month, so don't pick it up. Like, I, you know, they're, we're under a legal contractual agreement, too.
Well, it sounds like from, from the communication we got, that we're going to promise about any now, we're gonna have to work that.
Well, it's been diminished, yes. But I'm talking about on a month-to-month basis, if we have, because we do sometimes have quite a few people that have difficulty paying their bill as a whole. So if we rolled that in and said, okay, if you can pay your gas, water, electric, that, or not gas, but electric, water, sewer, that's fine. If you can't afford your garbage, we'll give you a month. I don't know how you do that. I mean, first of all, we're gonna get billed by area. Second of all, then you're asking the residents to subsume out, it's those people.
I, I understand what you're saying, I'm just trying to, trying to work this out in a different method, because what, what you're doing is, is we've imposed this mandate, and now we're going to use your water, water, electric, and sewer as leverage to make you pay your garbage bill. And there's gotta be, there's gotta be another way, another angle on this.
Well, we'll bring it back on the 21st, maybe.
Because that was part of our original discussion, was that we wouldn't, we wouldn't use that leverage to, to force the garbage payments.
So you're opposing that they can pay their water, sewer, and electric and just let their trash bill go?
No, I'm, I don't, I don't think they should let the trash bill go, I'm just, I'm thinking on it.
Take two weeks to think about it. We'll come back and we'll talk about it again, you know, give everybody time to think about what we want to do with that.
I mean, you, you got, you got a few holdouts, and I don't think they're gonna hold out forever. So I think changing the ordinance to, to, to handle a few holdouts is probably not the right way to go.
I mean, if you're holding out, you're paying for the service, you might as well be using it. It just doesn't make any sense to sit there and let the trash can sit next to the road.
You just might as well take advantage of what's there. It's there, it's there to use.
We'll bring it back on the 21st.
Yeah.
Give time to think about it.
Discussion regarding firearms rights resolution.
This is something I've asked for, and news, everybody's seen Effingham County pass this, pass this resolution. It's a, it's a feel-good measure. It doesn't give us any legal, any legality, I guess. But right now, there is a bill on the governor's desk for a three-day waiting period on America's favorite guns, the black ones that nobody, everybody loves and nobody seems to like. Uh, there's eight bills pending. Uh, it's Representative Marty Malan is pushing this stuff. This is symbolic, it's just something to say that we won't enforce anything more than what this, what's required by the state. We won't act like Deerfield and ban, and ban weapons from our town. Uh, it has more to do with, with a statement and, and, uh, not violating the constitutional rights of our citizens than anything else. Anyhow, I've got a copy of Effingham. Basically, we can, we can just fill in our name and send the same thing up.
Joe, can you take a look at this?
I have.
And the chief has, too, that's why I asked him both.
And, from both of you, what's your opinion?
I, I think kind of, um, Scott, you kind of hit the nail on the head. I call it as, it has no binding force to direct staff or the department to do anything differently, uh, but it is, I view it as a, an expression of this, if this is passed, an expression of this council's sense of where they think the policy should go. And as I like to tell people, this is still America, you can say what you want to say, so.
What'd you say, chief? Did you have anything?
Basically, take a look at that. Now, I, I'll have to say, I've noticed and read some of these House bills, have not read them lately because they change so often depending on what action happens in a community. Um, I, I think it's fine. I think there's no reason why we could not pass something like this. It's symbolic. But I look at some of the issues we have here, kind of timing, we just had a shooting probably within the last 30 days or so, and some of these type of, uh, bills that they're looking to impose upon criminal elements out there, um, really seems to have more effect on, uh, other citizens and things that are not in that mix and stuff. For example, on our issue, without going into detail, we had a stolen weapon from another county that a person had, had given to him from, uh, a family because it was a deceased family member, they gave it to that person and had it locked up in a lock, locked safe, and a person somehow managed to get it out, get it to a person that had been in trouble in our community before. So, these kind of restrictions that the state looks to impose, but had no bearing on, uh, a particular action like that. So I, I think this is fine. I, I don't think there's any reason that, uh, that we cannot make our opinion known as far as what we feel about these things.
Most of these bills don't pertain to the law-abiding citizens anyway.
That's correct.
You know, the criminals aren't gonna follow the rules or the laws anyway. I'm, I'm all for this, really.
Uh, do you want me to bring it back on the 21st for, or?
Please do.
Best place.
If you all want to come up here and get closer, you can see what's going on up here.
Can you hear me back?
Well, we're gonna do about a second, Brian. Okay, say, speak again. Are you there?
I am, can you hear me back?
Yeah, we'll just have to be really quiet.
Okay.
So, go ahead, um, we're all listening. I'm trying to figure out if there's a way to make this bigger, but maybe you.
You, you should be able to open it up onto a bigger, tighter browser there.
Here? No, the one above it, or the? Yeah. Well, go ahead while I look, Brian.
Okay, that's good.
We can see, yeah, we can see it.
Uh, or? Okay. Uh, hello, everybody, my name is Brian Chilikin, I'm from Onsong. I appreciate you guys coming to hear us this evening. I won't take up much of your time, but I'm just gonna give you a quick overview of the Code Red notification system, and this service is being used by thousands of government agencies throughout the country to deliver voice, text, email, social media, and mobile app alerts to residents for emergencies and non-emergency informational bulletin. So this is a great tool for you guys to increase communication to your residents for a wide variety of applications, so you guys can use this for really any type of alerting, emergencies, uh, non-emergency information, uh, announcement of a community event, a event, a street closure, letting residents know when you're gonna file the streets, uh, after a snowstorm. So the list really goes on and on of different types of events that you could use Code Red for to get information to the public. Um, we're gonna compile and build your database for your city a number of different ways. Number one, included in your subscription plan is the access to, uh, a database that we provide to you. It's made up of white page listings, consumer activity databases, and business data. So you're gonna start day one of your contract with a database in the system that allows you to send telephone calls to your residents. In addition to that, we will provide some, like, the place on the city website where residents and businesses can go and add additional phone numbers to the database. So this is a great way for your citizens to provide you with cell phone numbers, uh, direct line business phone numbers, sign up to receive text or email alerts from the city, as well as sign up for different types of alerts that you want to offer. So you can add checkboxes to that signup page for, uh, to receive public works notifications, to receive water-related notifications, uh, to receive announcements of community events, street closures, and then residents will be able to pick and choose what types of alerts, uh, that they want to receive from you, and then continue to build that database on top of the database that we're gonna provide to you initially. So the database is gonna continue to grow over time, and, uh, when you need to use the system to send out an alert, there's a number of different ways to, uh, get into the system and issue an alert. The nice thing about Code Red is web-based, so there's no hardware, software, phone lines where you have to purchase, install, and maintain. Uh, when you're using a desktop or a laptop computer, uh, this page that you're looking at right now is just a login page to a secure, uh, uh, system. You also have the ability to place and pass on your smartphone devices for your administrator to be able to access Code Red from a mobile device and send out a notification to your residents or staff. So that gets you into the system, um, and then when you use Code Red to send out an alert, uh, you're using our network to issue the alerts for you. So alerts can be issued from our facilities in Atlanta, Dallas, and Las Vegas, and those are the sites where your notifications will be initiated, and the speed at what you, at what these notifications are being delivered is very fast. Uh, most communities can handle thousands of notifications within minutes. So you guys, being a smaller populated community, you guys are gonna be able to use Code Red to communicate information to your residents very, very quickly, uh, from the system here. So what I'm gonna show you today is just a quick snapshot of our desktop version, so you can see on the screen there that I entered my username and password here, and I'm just gonna click on the login button, and this is gonna bring us into the system to accomplish whatever it is we're looking to do today. You can just enter the right password here. And this is bringing us into the dashboard where you can navigate through the system to accomplish whatever it is you're looking to do today. Uh, but one thing I want you guys to take away from our time together is just how easy you can use the system really is. When you issue an alert, there's only two steps required. You select your audience, who's gonna receive your message, and then you define the message that you want to send to them. And there's a lot of different ways that you can send out an alert. You can have pre-canned scenario saved, uh, for events that you're willing to send out an alert for down the road, and a scenario that can be stored in here is just an audience attached to a message. So you can have physicalized notifications saved, you can have notifications to specific streets or zones saved in the system, and then when you need to send out a pre-canned scenario that you already have built and waiting to go, you just select it from this dropdown box here, click on the launch key, and then you just send the notification out then, uh, that pre-canned scenario that you already have saved. It's also easy to build a brand-new scenario from scratch, and the ladder here at the top walks you through the two-step process of sending out an alert. If you already have a scenario created, you skip step two, you skip step three, and you launched the scenario. If we're building a brand-new scenario from scratch, the first step we do is we tell the system, are we using our emergency database or our general database? So when your system's logged in on your website, they have the ability to sign up for emergency alerts and/or general notifications. So for this event, I'm gonna say this is an emergency alert, I'm gonna continue. And the next step is just to define who we're gonna send those notifications to, and you have a number of different ways, uh, to issue that alert. So you have an all-call feature. If you need to notify everybody in the city, if you just click on this button here, you will grab your entire database and send out a citywide notification. You have an add-on, so this is a perfect tool if you have, uh, are sending out a notification for a water-related facility, so boil water order, uh, waterbanking, or even a public works notification, um, a street closure, letting residents know what the street's gonna be closed for closing. If you click on this button here, this will list every street throughout your city, and then you can select one street or multiple streets that you want to notify. So for example, you can select, uh, First Street, Third Street, and Fifth Street, and then you can tell the system, do I want to notify everybody on First Street, or do I want to define an address range? What's that, only one to 200 blocks? What's that? Only one to 200 blocks to the 600 blocks? I can make that selection. And then lastly, I can tell the system, do I want to notify both sides of the street? Or the odd side only? Or the even side only? You pick and choose. You have your contact groups. Code Red can also be used as an internal notification tool. So you can have different staff groups loaded into the system for your administration, for your police department, your fire department. So if you want to send out a notification to every city employee, letting them know after a snowstorm that work's going to be canceled for the day or come in two hours late, you can select your city staff list and then either report or type the message that you want to send to them. And then you can either send that out as a voice text or email. You pick and choose how you want that message disseminated. So if I wanted to send out an alert to the police department group, I just have to make that selection, save and close. Now, I can notify everybody in the police department group, or I can query this group based off of individual contact names or tags that I have set up. So the tag is a way for you to classify each person in this group, whether by what shift they work on or what rank they are. So if I also want my... I can move my police chief down. Go back in there. I clicked too many times. So if I only want to notify my police chief, my captain, and my deputy chief, I can make that selection, build a subgroup within the police department group. And now these are the individuals that decided the police department group that I'm going to notify. And now at this point, I just move forward to craft the message that I want to send to them and then issue that alert to my staff. I could also do map-based notifications. So the entire database that we talked about earlier that we're going to provide from white page listings, consumer activity databases, and business databases, that's all geocoded to the precise latitude, longitude coordinates. So your entire database is going to be on an underlying layer of this map. You're just not going to be able to see it. So from this map, you just need to tell the system, who geographically do I want to notify? You can find locations on the map. You save areas, load areas, incorporate any CRI files that you guys might have. There are literally a lot of different options down here as well. You can zoom in on the map. You can all the way down to street level. You can view the satellite view of the map, the pinpoint where you want to notify, and toggle back and forth to the street view. And then down here are your drawing tools. You have a polygon tool here that allows you just to draw an area that you want to contact. You have a rectangle tool that you can drag out. A circle tool that will show you the mile radius you're about to notify. A freehand tool just to draw. And then a polygon that allows you to outline an area. So what we just did, we told the system we want to notify this red area. I know I drew outside your city boundaries, but your system will be set to those boundaries. And you can tell, you'll be able to see how many calls, emails, and texts you're about to send in that red area. You can tell the system, do I want to notify all records or businesses only or residents only? You pick and choose. At this point, we're going to save and return. And we're going to continue to our message. And then that's where we tell the system, how do we want this to go out? Do we want to send a phone call, a text message, an email? Do we want to post this message to our social media outlets? You can integrate the system to post your emergency and non-emergency messages to your city Facebook page and your city Twitter account. You can also make a selection to deliver the notification to subscribers of the Code Red mobile alert app. So you simply tell the system, how are we going to deliver this message? And then we either report or type the message that we want to send out. And all your notifications will be sent out simultaneously to that red area very, very quickly. After you send out a notification, you're able to view real-time statistics of who received the message, who did not receive the message, and if anybody interacted with your message. So there's a lot of reporting tools in the system. I'm just going to show you a basic report here to give you guys an understanding of how to report it. And this will list every notification that you sent out from the system. And this is really all of my reports here. So we could take a peek at which report we're looking at to launch the notifications. And you want to see who received an alert, who didn't. You simply click on the one that you want. So it gives you a bar graph here of how many phones, emails, texts, and notifications to TVD and TTY devices for your area of residence. It'll give you a pie chart down below of percentages that are delivered to live people, percentages delivered to unanswered devices, and under distribution all the way down to the floor. And then that's a view of contact records. So the tabular reporting is on the top for all email and texts. These header fields here, you can export this information to a cell. So this gives you a snapshot of what happens with this alert that you just sent. So the top notification, this is an alert to me. You can see my name, my cell phone number. This alert was deployed live. I answered the phone. I picked it up live. You can see all the alerts were delivered to answering devices. You will see the address here. Then you have a key press dial-up. You have several different options for message interaction that allow residents and staff members to press a key and answer the question. So you'll be able to see if any of your recipients pressed a key and if they interacted with your message. So the reporting just ties everything up on the backend for you and allows you to get a visual representation of where we received the alert, who did not get the alert, and if they didn't get the alert, why didn't they receive it? So that's the Code Red system. It's a very easy system. Ran you through a demonstration, and I'm sure if you had to get on the system to do the issue an alert, you wouldn't have any problems using it. You simply go into the map, select the area that you want, will find your message, and send out that alert. Again, we're going to help you build the database. We're going to provide you with white page listings, consumer activity databases, and business data. We'll provide you with the links to place on your website for citizens to enroll the program and add contact information. And then we'll train your staff members also in the system. So a couple webinar sessions. You guys will be thoroughly trained with the message notification services team. Training takes about an hour or two. Allow you to start creating things in the system and really give you a much more in-depth overview training session than I did. And then it's tied to an over-recented manual, different tutorials, user guides, with a lot of other resources that allow you to be able to learn how to use the system and keep yourselves upright with the system as you move forward. There's a lot of different pieces of Code Red, a lot of different features, a lot of different tabs and windows that I can turn on to my dashboard and activate. I just really wanted to give you guys a quick little overview and not... We'll show you the basic core capabilities of the system through the different pieces that we looked at tonight. Again, it's a great tool for you guys to initiate notifications and keep citizens informed, as well as share information, wide variety of different applications. So I appreciate the time you guys gave me to give a quick overview. And if there's questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't think I have any, Jim.
No?
We're signed up, Chris.
No, not yet, no. The chief and I would like to sign up for it. We also got a demonstration from another company that's three times the cost. So we've, I've used a reverse angle one almost exactly like this and loved it. They're very, very economical. And I think we are desperate. We need a better notification system in this town. And so I just think, I don't want to speak for the chief, but I think he...
A lot more capabilities than I, that I'm able to use to just vehicle maintenance and things like that to help work with.
Yeah, they'll do like what... Brian, when you do, yeah, doing the GPS, the eye link.
And issues if it's time for maintenance for a particular vehicle or if there's other issues.
Can you repeat that one more time, Jim?
No, never mind. That's okay. Sorry.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay. We're just explaining how much we like it. So I think the biggest thing is, yes, they start with a database, but then it's building upon that. It's, you know, to get first and secondary. So, you know, most people these days have mobile phones, but we do have a large senior population in town. So, you know, they may use landlines and getting those landlines and... just making sure that it works for everybody, that it's not just mobile or it's not just landline.
What are the seven buttons on the left for?
Brian, what are the seven buttons on the left for?
Just different things. This here is your toolbox where you can save different things in your system. So you can save voice files and text files in your toolbox. You can save audiences. You can save geographic areas of future use. Inside of your toolbox is where you'll build your staff team for the police department, administrative staff, public works, whatever it might be. This is your statistic panel that we showed. Your Michael Red tab with several other capabilities. Your iCall tab here, it's a tool that's being used by state and county to utilize a FEMA program to deliver notifications. And then this is your resource library. This has a lot of different user guides, training manuals, press release templates to issue a press release through your local media to encourage citizens to visit your website and subscribe to the program, as well as a wide variety of different marketing applications. So there's different shortcuts down the left-hand side and different ways to get the different features within the software.
That's pretty basic and pretty simple.
It is, yeah. I liked the Excel spreadsheet. I liked the feedback where we'll know who answered. We'll know who didn't answer. We'll know, you know, did they respond? And then we can say, well, we tried. Because that way, if they reach out to us and say we didn't get notified, we can say, well, this is the number we have. And then if it's wrong, we can fix it, you know, that kind of thing. And so it is very easy. I like that you can nail it down. So like, we have a crime spree on this street. We only have to notify that street. Or if we need the whole town, or if we even want to hit the people, you know, within a half mile outside of town. It's very user-friendly, you know, and you can do a lot of different things. And I like the general, it's not just an emergency. It's, we have a water rain break here. We have, you know, crime, you know, people are breaking into cars. Be sure to lock your doors. I mean, just, you know.
Flushing hydrants.
Flushing hydrants, yeah.
I thought iCall said it was piss.
No. Now, they do have, Brian, is that, my notes are that it's a little extra for a weather. Will you describe that weather thing again?
Yeah, basically, there's another enhancement to Code Red that adds checkboxes to your opt-in page that citizens can subscribe to receive automated severe weather notifications. So citizens can sign up for flash flood warnings, tornado warnings, severe thun... tornado warnings, flash flood warnings, severe thunderstorm warnings, and winter storm warnings. I apologize. There's a second, the National Weather Service issues one of those alerts. The system automatically sends a telephone text or email to those residents that are immediately attached to the approaching storm. So that takes you guys out of the equation of having to issue the alert. It's all done automatically. The only thing that anybody has to do as a resident within the community, you just have to sign up for which weather alerts you would like to receive. And so if that's something you didn't want, we just have to modify the service screen that I sent there to you on that. I can do that very quickly for you.
I just thought I mentioned it because it was in my notes, so... Anything else?
I don't think so.
And two?
I think the weather would be appealing to a lot of people, the Weather Service.
Do we do that now? Do we send out alerts for you?
I can give you...
I don't know what kind of emergency it does.
From here.
I know it comes on my phone every now and then.
Yeah, I have it on my phone too. Older people have landlines. Might like that.
Can you do that, Brian, or is that separately through the National Weather Service?
What's that?
So if we have a senior citizen that has a landline, will they still get weather notices?
Yeah, they subscribe that landline and sign up to receive the weather alert. Yeah, that's what we...
Okay. All right, well, I think that's it. Oh, gosh. I think that's all. It must, okay. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. I appreciate the time, everybody. Still, we'll give you a call.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Just to follow up on that, it's only $1,500 a year. I mean, you want to talk about cheap. Because when reverse angle one first came... when reverse angle one first came out, I was using it in another community and it was $6,000 to set up and start using. So when I was getting quotes and the other one was almost $5,000 or over $5,000, I'm like, all right, that's a lot cheaper, but it's still expensive. And then when they said $1,500 yearly and then $300 to add the weather, so it'll be $1,800 total. I'm like, oh, that's a lot more.
It would just be nice to get away from the rumor mill and have a system that says, this is what, this is, these are the facts going there.
I would love, I mean, I would kill to have it.
That's true.
I would kill to have it.
Well, it worked for Friday. These are the facts. Just the fact, please.
Speaking of which, I have a couple warnings in my report. So I met with Aria. They came in this morning to give you a little more detail. So they got a new truck, and this is an automated truck. It's a really good thing to have an automated truck because it reduces the injuries that the workers undergo lifting those big garbage cans. So it reduces their injuries and it reduces their workers' complaints. There was an issue with the automated arm. These gentlemen live in the region and are familiar with Pomona City. They did not have the route map prepared yet. So they said, well, you know the town. Just do the whole town. Well, when the truck broke down, they had to bring in two regular rear loader trucks with different people who did not have a route map, who weren't asked for money. So they apologized profusely. They said, we will do better. We should have done better. They had butt over backwards. They, you know, were here Thursday. They were here Friday. They were here Saturday. They also came through town today because we had about four, I think, stragglers. Some of the issues were the route map, where they didn't get entire streets. But there were also some where we need to do better in notifying that it has to be curbside. We had one person who said, well, I had it on the inside of my sidewalk. You know, the truck can't raise it from there. So it's just little things like that. But again, they came through. They said, just call us, you know, as we work the bugs out. It's a new system. It's a new, you know, everything's new, so it's going to be a little tough. But again, make sure it's curbside. Make sure it's on the address side of the house. Some people live on a corner, and it needs to be where your front door or where your address is. Trucks also don't do both sides at once. They go down one side of the street, and then they may go around the corner because the automated arm is on one side. They will come back and get the other part of the street. You know, so I want to thank Aria for coming out Saturday, coming out today, trying to make it right, and the staff. I mean, Sandy and Ruth and Angie were just infominate patients, trying to help as much as we could. We were all there trying to resolve the problem. I can't tell you how much I was on the phone with Aria, all kinds of their staff. So, but again, these are hiccups we're going to deal with. Hopefully, it will be better. They're, they were in today, and I think they felt very strongly. I got personal cell phones. They're like, it's going to be better and, you know, please be patient. Okay, one other thing, June 9th is going to be our spring cleanup day. So you can put almost anything, not electronics, but almost anything that will fit into the back of a pickup truck on your curb where you usually put your garbage. back of a pickup truck on your curb where you usually put your garbage. We'll be promoting that from now until then, that day. I'll also be having more information about, it's so many cubic feet that I don't have it properly, but they said that basically it's what you fit in the back of the pickup truck. And let's see. The discoloration in the water, we may have a little bit more this week, because they have to come in and finish. They got one small section left. They don't think they're going to have to run the hydrants. If we do, we'll try to get the word out. That A- inch sewer line had never been cleaned, and it was three-quarters full of grit from our combined sewer. So that's why I was backing up in that area and the other houses that lived in that area. Believe it or not, now that we've cleaned it, we may not have to line it, because it's in really good shape. It's just that it was full of grit. So hopefully, we'll be done with that this week. And I just wanted to thank Dave Nichols and the staff for coming out with the oil spill on 54. We got there before I got did, and got it, you know, sanded over and cleaned up. We will, we used quite a bit of sand, but we will be billing the gentleman's insurance company, so. That's all I have for now. Unless you have any questions.
But I have something. A couple people talked to me about when lawns are being mowed, putting grass into the street. And I know it's, might be, we don't have an ordinance, but with this-
We do have an ordinance.
We do have an ordinance.
Yes. Oh. Yeah, and we're, I'm going to be looking for them.
Okay, good. I was thinking also, since we just saw this, that, you know, in the general, just kind of put out there, hopefully, I'll post your grass in the street.
Yeah, it clogs our gas catch basins, then that's why we have, you know, issues with some of our sewers.
Yes.
It also is dangerous for motorcyclists, because it gets slick.
I got talked to, too, about, there's more than one person concerned about the grass that lives in the street. And as a resident, I clean my basin out, so my house doesn't flood. Yes, so. We'll post something on our Facebook reminder.
And I counted, the chief's addressed about 60 code violations in the last year, and there's been a lot of talk that we're not doing anything about it. We're going to be promoting kind of a before and after of some of the big ones we've dealt with, and then the list of how much we have actually addressed, and then even discussing a top five or 10 worst, so that they know that they're out there, we're aware of them, and we're working on it, so.
Well, I do commend you, you, Terry, you've done a lot, changed things around here more than anybody ever has in your position, so I really thank you for your dedication.
Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you to all the staff. I really appreciate it.
What you put up with all the past week.
I know it's been tough. I'm sorry.
You jerk take crap, Terry.
Yeah.
I'm going to hand.
I'm going to jerk, Terry.
I'll say it.
Call it.
Test story?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kimberly?